We didn't have any better chair.
Blessing. Count every one of them.
You have a, do you have playoff?
Uh, we have.
You don't know about, I'll schedule you.
No.
I'm hoping. They don't have.
Look, everyone else.
Just the backside didn't have. I was good. Cause there might be a game in the towards.
Not open.
My sort of bar wins for my host too. You don't want to do. Too much, Your Honor. That right?
It's not like she's Stacy's call. Rachel's not here.
Fantastic.
Think he's overspending again.
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise if you're ready. For the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. Gracious and loving Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day that you've granted us. We pray that with your guidance and grace, we can achieve a sense of unity and work together. May our words be filled with love and respect for one another. May our actions produce, produce those results. And we have a humble attitude. Where we're good listeners and learn from one another. Let's not be quick to judge or criticize. But seek to have an open mind to different ideas and perspectives. As the leaves fall, we're reminded that no two leaves are alike. We're all part of a creation. They're different and have beauty and purpose in so many varieties. May we recognize those talents and beauty daily and make our community stronger and more peaceful. Thank you for the many talents, knowledge and gifts of our employees. We thank you for each one of their lives as they produce results for constituents. We ask you to meet their needs. Give each one a sense of satisfaction for the important work they perform. Or we remember last week. As we recognize pregnancy and infant loss awareness. And we pray that you'll comfort these families that have suffered these inconceivable losses. We ask you to comfort them. Provide them with peace that only you can provide. May we honor and be supportive in their courage and daily grief. And let's always remember the children lost during pregnancy. We know those precious souls are in heaven with you, Father. Now may your hand be over us and guide us this morning as we present these things to you in your name. Amen.
With the lead to consider flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Morning. This time we'll convene our commissioners' public meeting. And ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
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 Do we have any public comment on agenda items only? None from the audience? Any online?
I'm sorry, one online from Ingrid in Sulon. God bless you all.
Hey, thank you. All right, we have reports, Nikki.
Good morning.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification or invoices due through October 29th, 2025 to be paid on October 22nd, 2025. In the amount of $2,729,877.98. That's 87% out of the general fund, 0.83% out of other grants, 10.59% out of RMS and 1.58% out of escrow.
Nikki, we're going in the wrong direction.
Agreed.
Maybe we have to have a discussion about spending freeze.
I agree with that.
Yep.
Um, but we are seeing a lot of cleanup as well. People are getting invoices that. They have not submitted throughout the year and they're cleaning them up. So our spending is going to go up.
Why are they sitting on them?
So nothing is truly centrally centralized. So we rely on the markets to.
Right. It should be sitting on them. And second of all, if I'm a vendor. Vendor shouldn't have to wait for their money. I won't come back for the work. It's not good business. Yeah, well, we'll have that discussion later today. Okay, a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, informational highlights. We're honored to have. Joe Abbott here today from STEP. Good to see you again. I know you've been busy. Your staff's been very busy. So, and uh. The 60th anniversary is coming up.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having me for our quarterly update from STEP. As you can imagine, we are very busy right now. Um, one of the things I do want to highlight is actually uh the substitute aid pool program. I'm happy to announce that we. Are actually at our one year mark, which was on October 14th, uh which is super exciting. So I do have some handouts for you.
And this is to assist the childcare in the area.
Yes. And so the, for just a summary, the substitute aid pool program um really is focused on. Early education staffing shortages and connecting trained vetted substitute aides with licensed childcares. Throughout uh what through basically a technology driven scheduling system. And so um I'm happy to have Megan McBrien right with me today. Um, Megan was hired to operationalize this program and she has done an excellent job. And so we're really uh happy to have her on the team. We have eight providers representing 13 sites throughout LeComing County. We have 13 active aides and one in onboarding. Our average shifts that we've been able to uh actually fill is 14 or 41 per month. And so if you think about that, each shift is basically a shift in a childcare where if that staffing person wasn't there. They would have to shut down that childcare. Within these childcares are anywhere between 15 to 18 children typically, sometimes a little bit more. And so if those classrooms would have to change, to, to close, those parents would not have a place for their children uh and therefore. Would not be working. And so this is a incredibly beneficial project and program within the county. Uh, really focusing on workforce development of getting folks within the early ed field. Cause we, we, we know that there has been uh Penn College doesn't offer a program right now. Um, and there's not very many folks going into that early ed field. And so in terms of the preschool, like Coming College actually in the last um did a, a study and they actually had one student. Um, from their graduating program from the 41 people that they had uh that actually went into pre-K but not within Pennsylvania. So um we, we train folks, we provide all the clearances, we, they become basically part-time staff of STEP. Um, and then the childcares uh connect with them via an app. And the app shows when they are available and then they pick the app that when they're um available. And it's an incredible program to be able to do what we need to, to keep these childcares open. Uh, so you can see some more information that's on there. I would also ask you to check out the feedback. So we have provider feedback. Aid feedback, substitute performance, success stories, um and various themes. The impact has been huge. So over 400 classroom shifts have been kept open. Um, we're looking at replication and we've just received a grant to expand this program into Tioga County from the. Uh, United Way of North Central Pennsylvania. Lancaster County has operationalized the program. York Economic Partnership is considering operationalizing and we've been working with them. Next week, Megan and I are actually presenting at a statewide conference for community action agencies. Um, this is a extremely uh well thought out program to really bring people to a specific need. Uh, and really we could not have made it happen without LeComing County's ARPA dollar. So really appreciate your support in this. So. I really wanted to um talk about this program today. We've actually had six of our aides transition to. Permanent early uh care and education positions, all of which have asked to stay in the pool. And we have seen incredible uh opportunity because these are basically flexible jobs. So when they're not at their full-time job now, they're picking up other shifts. So they're continuing to be an asset within the network that we are creating.
So with the 400 classroom uh shifts kept open. That prevents possibly. Parent having to stay home with their child.
A hundred percent.
And then employer not having the employee free day.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it truly is. Like we keep saying, childcare is workforce development.
Very.
If we don't have a robust childcare system, we do not have the opportunity for people to. Know that their kids are somewhere safe and learning and so they could be as productive as they can in their employment. So it's a, it's a big piece of that um puzzle in terms of workforce development. Other questions about the aid pool program?
It's, it's awesome that you have six now that have gained full-time employment out of it.
Yes.
Megan, thank you for your efforts and work and. So. Crisis not only in our county, but nationwide. This is a great way to tackle on it.
Yeah.
And you're doing a good job. Thank you.
My goal is to see this go statewide. So.
All right.
We'll see if we can make that happen.
I mean, we need it statewide. It's, it's, it's one of the, the topics that we talk about here and we do a lot of talking about and there's. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of action in the, in the positive direction to remedy it. So we, so we thank you.
Yeah, this is.
Taking a step. I, I'm still hoping that the, the state, it's one of the aspects where the state has made it. Um. Made it, I, I think too stringent. To have uh childcare facilities and the rules, it, it, it just becomes almost impossible to do it. Like you said, to go through the education. System that is needed and then the pay on the backend that you get, it doesn't balance.
Exactly. And I should just to speak on that, you know, our childcare workers in LeComing County. The highest they're making is somewhere around $10 an hour. Within this aid pool program, they're starting at 14, 1465.
Right.
And they also, we also are doing retirement with them.
So it's um. I mean, when you talk about like safe and educational for um childcare, the key is that they're safe.
Uh huh.
And, and I, it would be wonderful if they had, you know, these in-home preschool programs and all these things that, but. First and fourth, we just need places where the kids go that they're safe and they're cared for so the parents can work.
Uh huh.
And then like the education system, I understand it's great when it starts at three and four. But it really starts in kindergarten. So we just, that's, I, I wish the state. Would lessen the requirements to be in the field.
Uh huh.
Because there's a lot of like those of us who were watched by our grandparents and things like that, they would have never been academically qualified to watch us.
Uh huh.
But they did and we turned out okay.
Uh huh.
So that's the, I, I think there's a um. You know, Mark and I were just talking about like the common sense aspect of legislation that sometimes is missing. Um, and then they turn around and say, oh, we, we know we need healthcare or not healthcare. We know we need childcare.
Uh huh.
Um, but they just put more roadblocks in the way of making it. Functional in our society. And so, so God bless you people for what you've done.
Yeah. So I think the innovation piece of it is, is critical and there's that whole like growth. Between birth and the age of four where brain development is happening. So being in those safe environments and receiving those. Basically cognitive, social, those are the kind of educational things that need to be happening at those age. So that people can be growing up to be able to be great people within civic, civil society, to understand responsibility and all those kinds of pieces. So the classroom setting is important for those ages so that they're not bombarded when they get into the school setting. Where they don't know how to share and be with those things. So that's all that, that learning that needs to happen, which, which we feel. Uh, we have some incredible facilities in LeComing County that are doing that and making our kiddos school ready. And that's where they need to be. And so it's, it's really just getting them school ready so they can get into that education system, like you said. At, in kindergarten and take off in terms of that learning.
Yes, like you said, so much of it is learning to play in the sandbox with the other kid.
Yes.
And so yes, that is. So anyway, I, thank you for what you do because we need this and more of it.
Yes, that's great.
And we know it.
So Rochelle, one of the things that, that we've been asking to pass is what hap, what happened to the ARPA dollars? And we have it broken down. And when we sat down and did that, um. We wanted to make sure, and I emphasize this stuff has this, these monies aren't going to come to us once.
Uh huh.
And it had to be spent generational.
Uh huh.
And what's better generational than our kids?
Yes.
And, and Commissioner Merebe at the time, he, he said, we have to make sure we spend some of this money on our, our children.
Yes.
We agreed. And this is a example of what were some of those monies were spent.
Yes.
And, and we were complimented at the time. Uh Senator Casey had stopped by one day. He had stopped by several counties to see how they were spending their ARPA dollars. And he complimented the county for actually having a plan.
Uh huh.
And he was impressed that the things we were spending on were generational.
Uh huh.
And he also emphasized about the childcare. And so it's great to see the monies being used properly and effectively.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. I mean, really it was us coming to the idea and John Lavelle with the county planning really kind of helped move it forward. Um, because this is just one of the components. The other component of the ARPA dollars is really training. That we're doing for the staff and we're doing these what we call micro learnings right now, which are tied to specific settings within. That are settings like um imaginary play. There are settings like um the social emotional pieces like we're talking about. And so to help the childcares get um both the training and the, the, the items that they need to be able to. Function at that level to get the, the, the students uh and children ready. So. It is a great opportunity to be able to pull this together um and be able to see it operationalize so quickly. Uh, if you remember, we got the funds in like May, we operationalized it by October and now we're one year out, which is incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to our controller and our fiscal department for. Working with them and getting it done quickly.
Uh huh. Um, so just a couple of other updates. Um, you're probably wondering how we're faring within the uh current economic uh. Climate.
We know how we're faring.
So um we, we do have a lot of our grants that are continuing. Um, some, sometimes we're getting invoices paid. On the state and federal level. Sometimes we're not. Um, I met yesterday with Congressman Musser where we spoke about various things, including. The lines of credit interest, basically that you all and you know, organizations like ours have to pay when we have to increase our line of credit. Um, STEP has increased its line of credit to ensure that we are moving forward. We also took advantage of the Department of Treasury. Um, bridge loan program to keep our pre-K classrooms and the Head Start supplemental classrooms open. Um, if you remember, that's 25% of what you received the last year. We're already beyond the three months that that would have covered. Um, but we did utilize that so that we could kind of pay back our line of credit and be able to move forward. Um, I had a great meeting with Congressman Musser. We also sent um additional information to all of our other federal reps. And as you know, from being on the board, the board of STEP penned a letter as well, talking about the value. And the importance of the community service block grant dollars, um because that's really what creates us as a community action agency and kind of. Creates our network so that we have these best practices that we can share and it is that gap filler in, in times where we need that gap filling. It also provides the support for our one-stop program, which is anybody coming in the door, we do that full assessment with them. So we know what are all the barriers that they are facing. So they can come to us once, tell their story once. And then we can holistically figure out what that plan is for that family. It is a critical need, particularly within our county to be efficient, streamlined and not wasting. Public dollars essentially. And so people are coming in and doing that. Um, where, where I am seeing some. Uh, concern is LaHeve crisis program, which is supposed to start November 1st, is not going to be starting. Um, so the county assistance office is not going to be taking applications. Um, I did talk to Congressman Musser about this. Last year in LeComing County, um 50% of the individuals that we helped in LaHeve crisis were over the age of 60. And 70% of those were uh women, were single, are single family women. And so what that tells me is in LeComing County, the majority of the folks who are using that program are older women. Um, potentially widows or individuals that don't have somebody else at home to be helping with their furnace or anything. The LaHeve crisis program is critical. So that's a program where um say, you know, weather's getting cooler. So you turn on your furnace the first time, nothing's working. You don't have the capacity to be able to fix that. Um, and your house has the potential for freezing pipes, breaking other, other, you know, water heaters, all those kinds of things. You call the county assistance office, the county assistance office calls STEP. We have actually teams of local contractors that go out into the field and con, and we have to do it within 24 hours. To ensure that that person is safe within their home um and, and the heat is on. And so. Um, that could mean bringing uh supplementary heaters and for a short period of time, if the, if the furnace needs to be redone. Um, and so a lot of the funds that come through the LaHeve crisis program are going out to local contractors. Our number one contractor is team specialists within the community and they do an excellent job. Um, we are hopeful that um we can see some movement on both the state and federal budget so we can move that program. Um, right now we are told that there is going to be no referrals. Uh, and that's concerning to me, knowing the residents in LeComing County that have used that program last year. Um, so you know, we did, I did um communicate that to the congressman and to all of uh our federal folks with the hope that. Um, they can understand the urgency um with that program specifically. And those funds come through DHS. On the federal level and then they are passed through, through D C E D and the weatherization programs. So just wanted to give you a really real life example of how um. Of my concerns in terms of what this is looking like for our residents.
Now, you bring up a good point about the line of credit and the interest. Uh, I voiced that Monday at our meeting.
Uh huh.
Yesterday I was at C D C O G with 10 other commissioners. And voiced that and, and think about this, the state. As we know, has an impasse.
Uh huh.
They're sitting on the people's money that's collecting interest.
Uh huh.
As your agency and joiner and everybody takes out these lines of credit. When they pay that back, they have to pay the interest back.
Yes.
Okay. That is an extra burden on our taxpayers.
Yes.
Because they don't send the interest along with. The payments. So the taxpayers are basically paying double. And as a result. Um, they've talked about this down Harrisburg. They actually have a bill, I believe it's in the Senate. So I'm encouraged that the constituents to contact them, tell them to move this bill that the interest either gets forgiven or repaid.
Uh huh.
Because it's extra money out of their pockets because they can't make, they can't make an agreement, they can't compromise and pass a budget. And as a result, taxpayers are paying extra.
And so from our perspective, we are not allowed to use our state or federal or any kind of grant dollars to pay our interest.
Right.
So last, so basically it's our unrestricted dollars that we um have to use last year under good terms, right? Where we didn't have a state uh budget impasse or a federal um budget shutdown. Um, we had $68,000 in interest. And that's just from, you know, when payments are coming in from the state and the feds um and not having those kind of. A lot of it that we do is reimbursement, right? We do the work, we submit the invoices and then we get. And so. It's going to be tremendously higher this year. And even in the bridge loan, um, you know, that's a bridge loan for money that. We already have contracts for and there is a 4.5% interest rate on that. With the Commonwealth Treasury, um which I do hope that that is reconsidered, um because that's uh really challenging.
So you see how it hurts just your agency alone. But it's hurting everybody because it's. Paying extra money you don't have to.
So I, you know, I think we are doing.
You shouldn't have to.
Exactly. Uh, we are doing our part. I'm actually going down to Harrisburg on Monday for the local government hearings, speaking about. Uh, community service block grant dollars, the importance of them in our local communities. Um, it's a, it's a house hearing. So I'll be at the Capitol um speaking about that as well as. How the impasse is affecting our residents here in LeComing County. Um, I think it's important that people just understand how it truly is affecting um folks. We do not provide any food. Um, and I know that staff benefits is something that's looking at not being moved forward in, in November. And so that is very concerning. We are not a, a food entity. Um, but I'm sure the food bank is also. stressed about that.
They, they are. We were at a dinner last night, Representative Ham was there. And he volunteered last week at a food bank and he says the shelves are getting scarce.
Uh huh.
And they don't have the money to buy extra food.
Uh huh.
So once those, those shelves go empty, they're gonna have to close their doors.
Yes.
So this, this is beyond serious.
Yep. Yep. Um, I will provide also, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll provide them um after. Um, just some success stories and maybe I'll just email them to Mary Rose instead of kind of going, taking up more of a time at your meeting right now.
Yeah.
If, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I would urge our legislators down in Harrisburg. Stay in Harrisburg. Until this is resolved, don't come home on weekends. Don't come home at night. You stay in Harrisburg until you get a bet, a budget passed. So it's, that's the only way it's, it's gonna get done. Lock them in a room and get it done.
One of our Head Start Director, or our Head Start Director mentioned like, like we all, all of us are trying to do everything we can, right? To keep um, keep things going, right? And we all have to be adults, you know, for the children that are being affected. Um, and we see that right now and our older adults. Um, that's a really key thing that we need to be thinking about as the weather, weather turns and these programs aren't in place. That are really about the safety of the residents within LeComing County.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hopefully that was what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. And again, thank your staff for all the work that you do. Okay, Mike.
Excuse me. Good morning. Uh, well, one informational item here in the district attorney's office, Kenneth Bowers. Assistant County Detective Union, part-time at 25 per hour. Not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, anticipated starting of November 3rd, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's no personnel actions.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Hiya.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, item I have for you is vote to approve the license and maintenance agreement with Corrections Development Incorporated. This is the Criminal Justice Records Management System for the District Attorney's Office.
Hey, motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you. I don't believe we have Stacy's.
She's sure. Action item 4.2. Vote to approve the following appointments to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Anne DeDonato. Jeremy Reese. And Chris Smith.
Okay. Motion to approve the three individuals.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Uh, we want to thank them for uh. Putting their name forward and volunteering and, and their time. Um, to serve on this important committee. And as all, if so many committees that people serve on throughout the county. Without them, um. We would have the expertise, the knowledge. Um. And advice to get things accomplished. So we want to thank everyone who serves on these volunteer boards. Uh, from the Airport Authority to the Planning Commission, to this Local Emergency Plan Committee. I don't want to keep going because there's so many of them, but I want to thank each one of them. So. That said, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Leslie, morning.
Leslie.
Commissioners, today we're seeking your approval um to renew our maintenance agreement on the firewalls. Out at the landfill. This would be a three-year renewal from the $24,084.22. This would take us to 2028.
Motion to accept.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Um, Leslie, just for my satisfaction, does this, is this budget if it's 24,000 under you and I T or under?
I believe that it's under us.
I'm assuming we get a better deal if we do it for three years.
We do, and that's why we did it that way. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it will go till 2028. So. That's a great question. And, and we could do a year. It's just definitely more cost effective for us if we did the three years, but that's.
We know, yeah, do we know what it would be for one year?
So don't quote me. I didn't bring that with me. It was, it was like, it didn't make sense to me at first. So it was like $7,500. For the, for one year. And I'm like, okay, well, that doesn't add up. Like that math doesn't add up. And they're like, well, no, because next year it's gonna go up. And then the next year it's gonna go up. So it's cheaper to do the three years than it was to, to do one year.
Kind of locking in a rate.
Right. And I'm a.
I mean, there's.
We could absolutely do anything. I just.
Would it hurt us to table this for a week?
Right.
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's, that's, he has a motion. Okay, let's, that's, he has a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we just need to do it before December.
I'll withdraw the motion. I'll make a motion to table it.
Yeah. That's why I kind of wanted to bring it to your attention, because I wasn't sure.
If it doesn't hurt us to table it before you, let's get those questions.
No, uh, we have till December first.
Okay, great.
Yep.
I will second the motion to table.
Oh, fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hereby table till later date. Thank you. Hey, good morning, Steve.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Uh, we are looking for item four-point-four. This is the agreement with Hillis Karns Engineering Associates, the amount of twelve thousand two hundred fifteen dollars. And this is for the subsurface exploration or pour drilling, as it's called, for the magistrate's uh build in Jersey Shore. Um, actually, it is not a twenty twenty-five budgeted item, but we have funds available for that.
This is for Dieter's Building?
Yes.
And we have to do this, we have to do this now? Because Dieter's Building is probably in the spring. What's the urgency of having it done now?
What, the reason this needs done uh initially is for the architect to determine what is below the surface, which dictates his ability to develop the plans or the blueprints for the
Okay.
foundation.
It's like we have one item, another one, it's probably another. It's gonna be very difficult. It's still been, I have a tree on it. That's the best way to explain it. And there's only so many plots you could pull from.
Right.
And all of those plots are basically already good respect. And you just have weeds coming out.
All right. So is there, again, if we table this for a week, so Mike can investigate this further to see where funds can be paid out of, would that hurt it at all?
No.
Okay, let's, let's have a motion table then.
Okay. Did you just make the motion?
Yes, yes, I made the motion.
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments?
No.
All in favor to table?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. And then can you get with mine and we'll figure out which one we can pay it out of, if it needs to go through this year or in the twenty twenty-six? It's getting lower. Okay, thank you.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
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 Hi, I have a vote to approve the Riverwalk Extension Grant Application to Pendot's Transportation Alternative Set-A-Side Program, also known as TASSA, in the amount of one-point-five million dollars. We are applying for this grant for Phase One of the project, which is from Mainor Street to Allen Park. Um, part of the reason we're applying for this grant is to to sub out county commitment, county committed funds for this project. Project costs have gone up and we'd like to find other public funding to use this project. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to remind everyone of. Um, it is a top-ten trail gap um listed in multiple state plans. It is a brownfield to playfield designated site and is a priority for many of our programs. Grant applications are due at the end of the month. We have received notice probably in twenty twenty-six and funds would be available twenty, late twenty twenty-six at the earliest, um, but usually it's like three years on the work range. So there's no immediate need to spend money for this project.
Yeah. A motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments?
Nope.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Hey, Commissioner, comments? Gentlemen, have anything?
I have no additional comments this week.
Um, yeah, I have two. Hmm. Um, last night, as Scott mentioned, we were at a uh Township Supervisor's Annual Dinner at Hughesville and um it was just encouraging whenever you see uh, you know, these people who really are on on the ground, uh, the boots on the ground in our local communities and and the, you know, they're not doing it for money. Um, they're just, the, the, it's almost volunteer, if it is not volunteer, to to make the, their neighborhood better. And, you know, to see the room full of people who are doing that, uh, it's always encouraging to find these, these people who are so civic-minded and just wanting uh, do what's best for themselves, their neighbors, their kids and and all those. And it's, it's a, it's an encouraging event every year. Um, also tonight at the Y W C A, there's a vigil at five-thirty. Um, I think October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, so I I will be at that and it's just uh one of the um, you know, one of the many things that that we're, we've learned in our society of the things that we need to bring awareness to. Um, you know, we talked about childcare crisis, um, you know, we, mental health. Um, we're, we're learning in society of the things that before we, we just didn't talk about them. And now we're getting to the points that we're talking about them. And now we've gotten better at talking about them and we have to make better advancements to fixing them. So um, there is a vigil tonight at five-thirty and um because there is uh, you know, fewer, I don't know, fewer things worsen in our society than domestic violence. And it's, it's tragic, the, the stories are tragic. And um, we, you know, the, the more focus and the more awareness that hopefully that that progress is made. Um, we were here, uh, they were here a couple of weeks ago and they talked about that they're getting into the schools and talking to kids because, you know, they only, they, they only, growing up, they only know what they see and what they've learned in the house and how many of the kids are, are, when they're being taught that like this is not the way normal society is supposed to work, but the numbers are staggering of, of the amount of of women that that have been domestically abused and um, and we know it's cyclical, that that the abused, the abused so often in life then becomes the abuser. So um, there's a vigil tonight, like I said, five-thirty at the Y W C A, which is right over here.
And the numbers continue to increase. I, I spent seventeen years of my life as a, as an agent working domestic violence and assaults for like Coming County. And uh, it's one out of every three women and now one out of every four men. So it's uh, it's continuing to, to, to get worse. And um, we see the PFAs that have exploded over the years, just in like Coming County alone. And um, again, if if you know of anyone who's going through this, please be an ear to listen. Try to get them to help to get out of this, this horrible, horrible situation they're, they're, they're in. Uh, there's resources out there, like Coming County is rich in resources, assist them so they can, they can get out of this cycle um and live a, a life full of peace for them and their kids, if they have kids. They don't have to experience this nightmare daily and the kids don't have to experience it. Um, so if you see any of it, please report it, help those individuals. So um, they do the vigil every year, it's well-attended. I mean, anyone's welcome to attend as they honor the victims that have, uh, they're no longer here, unfortunately. And we don't want to add any more, any more plates to that table, ever, ever.
I said I wasn't gonna talk and then you guys bring this stuff up and I, I, I just, the, the comment I'd like to add to that, I don't want to be super political with this. Um, and we'll talk about money this week. But, but you, you guys are absolutely right. And and some of those violences domestic and and there's, there's a lot of other crimes out there that go unnoticed and untalked about. People are afraid, they don't talk about it, you know, you, you, I was, I was shocked one day to learn that I had a friend that had domestic abuse in a previous marriage, you know, and, and we never would have known, you know. Uh, although newer through that time, never would have known that that was going on in her life. So I, I just think that, that, you know, the awareness of it is, is, is good for us to be on top, on, on top of. Um, but it also hits me a little bit where I look at our judicial system and that's where I'll be a little political today. Look at our judicial system, they've got to hold criminals accountable. Because the, the scary part is to these, to these, um, and and it's women and men both, but I, obviously we all know it's women more so that are being abused. Um, they are, they're afraid enough to bring it up. And if, and if our judges turn around and let these people out on an unsecured bail or a super-low bail or whatever, and, and then they're out on the street, there's no protection for the, for the, for the abused person in in those situations. Um, it's very difficult for our police officers to do anything. Uh, if our judicial system does not stand behind what the police officers and the abused person is telling them. So just keep that in mind. We, we, we need to make sure we're all working together uh on these problems. We can't have one of our pieces not holding people accountable.
Yeah. Any comments from the public? And from the audience, any from online?
We do have some online and I just want to preempt this by saying I'm gonna read these out of order because it's a lot of and forth. Um, so I want to read it in a way that's gonna make sense. Um, Mr. Thomas Adams, good morning, Lycoming County. Thank you for the attention given to making the corrections to the live feed comments. We really appreciate your work and not necessary to apologize for not knowing what you did not know. Thank you, Mr. Adams, for that. Um, since book banning was mentioned last week, the practice banning books is important. Those books have nothing to do with accepted classics or historical accounts and so on. It's about keeping pornography out of schools and public places, libraries and other publicly funded institutions. I will not name titles, but so others understand if an adult was presenting the same material to a child, being caught doing so, that person would be charged with corrupting the morals of minors, grooming, child abuse, including emotional and psychological abuse. There are billions of books worldwide. None of our schools and libraries contain all of them. We have enough problems with sex crimes and the corrupting of hearts and minds with books that would be labeled anywhere from R plus to triple X. This smut doesn't belong in places accessible to children. This isn't healthy for adults to consume. Let's at least agree to keep pornography and smut out of publicly funded institutions. Thank you for your dedication to our country, or I'm sorry, apologize, our county. May God bless America and may God bless Lycoming County. Then the next comment would be from Kalen Jade. The problem is those are not the books they are banning, banning. They are banning books such as To Kill a Mockingbird, which puts a spotlight on the dangers of racist ideologies and racial profiling. Those are not the books that should be banned. When books such as nineteen eighty-four are being banned, that's an issue. When Kite Runner is being banned for highlighting the true atrocities of Holocaust, that's a problem. And then Mr. Thomas additionally commented, in Lycoming County, nobody is pursuing to ban the book titles mentioned by our fellow concerned citizen. And the local musician uh commented, Thomas, I do think that the point Kalen was making, P A was ranked third most in the number of book ban efforts last year, many being the types described by them. While true, it hasn't happened here yet, there's reasonable consideration to keep it that way. And I believe that is it.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that a little, I was at a library board meeting a couple, maybe two months ago. And uh, a citizen showed up and and talked about that of, there's a book in the in, in the tween section, the children's section, that they thought that, and I said, well, are, aren't there, like, we're not the only libraries, aren't there like a million libraries all over it? Don't they, can't you just ask where they put them? And they said there is a, a general rating system that the, the publisher tells you kind of what section they think it should be in. And then the other libraries have it. So it's, it is not random. It's not like it shows up at the, you know, the the Jersey Shore Library and the librarian just says, oh, this is where it goes. Like, there is lots of guidance that goes along with it. But it is, it's one of the interesting things about our free speech and, you know, they've always said, if you don't like it, turn the dial. And if you don't like it, don't read it. And what's one person's smut is another person's, you know, intellectual and what's graphic, you know, the kite runner is, is graphic, but it's real world. So it's, it's, it is a very delicate, but in, in, um, just for, to defend the libraries aspect. Um, and I'm not, I, I assume, you know, schools, whether it's a school library or a public library, there is lots of guidance from the people in the business that know as to where they think it should fall.
And speaking of libraries, uh, this Saturday, uh, Jersey Shore will be celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary at the Jersey Shore Library and they're having, I believe, an open house and anyone's welcome to attend. If you're up in the Jersey Shore area, stop in and congratulate them and thank them for what they do. Uh, I think there was an article in the paper yesterday, wasn't it, Pat on it? So thank you for covering that. Small little town library, that's important. Okay. That said, we uh have completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned till Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And it'll be interesting to see what Halloween costume Commissioner Musina brings in this month. So, thank you.
You know, I have ideas, you mentioned.